Okay, it's six o'clock PM, Wednesday, August 7th. This is a regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting. I'd like to open the meeting. Select people present: Josh, Mike, Jeff. Employees present: Michelle and Matt, Fire Chief. And public is present. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two, open session. This session is limited to two minutes, extension per seat. And the first speaker listed is Beth Rauel, and her concerns are speed on Main Street.
Hi, I'm Beth Rauel. I'm here tonight because I spend a lot of time on Main Street in Sanderville, probably the most time out of anybody in town. People drive way too fast, that's not new, but they seem to be going faster and faster. Fifty seems to be a normal speed through town, and almost daily there's squealing tires of near accidents at the intersection. So, I had called DOT. DOT said that if the select board puts in for a study with DOT, they will come out, they will set up the strips across the road, monitor the speed limit, and maybe we could get some flashing solar speed limit signs or something needs to change because it is way too fast. I'm sure you guys at the town office see people whizzing through, and it's, I mean, I'm busy at the redemption, Melanie's really busy over at the hair salon. People getting out of their cars are nearly getting taken out by fast drivers. So, I would like to see if maybe we can do something downtown and slow a couple people down. That was it?
Have you seen any difference since you brought this to our attention? Because I spoke with Sheriff's Office myself.
Not a bit, not a bit. And like even today, we had, it's not just out of staters, it's locals. I've seen some local Sanderville residents zip in through the middle of town. I mean, you know, sometimes I go a little too fast, but I do notice the towns that have the flashing speed limit signs, I pay more attention to my speed and slow down if I'm going too swiftly. So, I'd like to see something happen.
I noticed there's no speed limit when you come off 15 onto 23.
Well, there is now. They just put up a speed limit sign right here as you turn. There hasn't been any difference.
So, your suggestion is putting in one of those year speed solar power signs?
I would like to see one on each side of town, you know, one up by the post office where it drops down, and then one off of 15. I'd like to see two.
You're talking about the flashing sign?
Yeah.
Not the thing that tells you how fast you're going?
Well, there's a few different ones, but they're, and they're all solar powered. Something, something.
Monson has one, Grebel has one.
I just put in some and I think it works.
And you, you've had a conversation with DOT about this?
Yeah, and they said that it is their thing, but they need to do a study first, which needs to be requested by the town itself. So, you need to put in a request. I don't know how it works. But I'd love to see someone maybe get the ball rolling.
If I could suggest talking with the town of Abbott, because they've just recently gone through that whole process and installed those.
So, Abbott has them?
Yeah, and I've seen a markup there. But you see a lot of people slamming their brakes on soon as that, their speed comes up.
Yeah, yeah, you're talking about the one that like flashes and is like, "You're going too fast, fifty, it's only ten..." Yeah.
I mean, it's even twenty feet off the road on the telephone pole. I mean, it's not like it's right there, and it still catches your eye.
They have those portable ones too, don't they?
Well, we, the sheriff, I say we, I don't love we anymore. We did have one. It aged out, and there are some that you can get loaned from DOT, whether they have any available or not. And they just, they're set up mobile in different locations as we did with ours. But it depends on availability, I suspect. But this sounds like a better.
Well, I checked into it with the local sheriff department and stuff, which you're right, they, they actually don't have one to use. And DOT would just be temporary, you know? So, if we can get DOT to install the solar, I mean, that's permanent, that's going to be there year round for everyone. Yeah.
That's all the discussion on this. Everybody said what they had to say. We'll need a motion if we're going to move forward with approaching DOT.
Make the motion.
We have a motion on the floor to, let me make this clear, to have our select board contact DOT and request a traffic study to install speed signs. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Vote? Three votes for requesting a traffic study for DOT.
Thank you, guys. I'm going to do that now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it in. Okay, moving on. Item three, we need to sign the minutes of the 6/19/24 and 7/20/24.
Your minutes are right there. One set of those minutes have the prior board's names on them.
Okay.
So, that, just be aware of that. The other set is a set of your minutes.
Okay. We won't sign those now, then.
We didn't know how you wanted to handle the June minutes, so we did put lines on the second page.
This one is, that's July.
Now, would you prefer to have those emails to each one of you prior to the meeting?
I think it would be better to have a chance. I did not read them.
Okay.
So, we're signing here. Treasury warrants do we have?
Keep it a cool that down.
See, that page that you're looking at there, Jeff, that is something that I gave the board so you could kind of get used to the finances. So, that's just FYI for you. And then the warrants, I think you have in front of you.
Yep. All right, so moving on. Item four, review of the treasurer's warrants. A is payroll forty-nine and fifty, which is...
Is this going to take a while, most of these things?
No, as far as the warrants themselves?
Right.
No, you just basically look at the top of them. If you have a question, just ask me. Normally, all of your bills would be approved by the town manager. He would initial them before they get on the wall for you.
Right, which we don't have. No, I think so, accounts payable.
I don't know if you want to move your two speakers up.
That's what I'm thinking.
Because the abatements and things might take a little longer.
Mm-hmm.
That was why I...
Yeah.
So, we want to come back to item C? Do we want to deal with the, do we have any of those people here?
No, nope, you don't. Those, well, like I was talking to Jeff earlier about, we have had a couple complaints this week. One being that with Brian Howard's area, there's been some blasting going on, and a person that's nearby to them has horses and was kind of concerned that the horses jump, she could get hurt, and there's no warning when the blasting's going on. I have not known how to really deal with that situation. However, the campers have arrived at 299 North Dexter Road.
Gene Weeks property.
Yes, and I sent, I had called Lance, and Lance has gone out to the property.
Yep, I've been there a couple of times. I mean, slow drives, have no reason to approach him. They're not in violation of any ordinances as of yet. There's no rules against letting in a camper. We have no set bats from the town of Sanderville.
What about set bats?
The only thing I could be concerned with is if they're not following wastewater rules. So, I have no reason to believe they're not at this moment. And you, I was contacting maybe a year ago, I believe it was their grandson, possibly? Because I think the Weeks moved forward and are not coming back, and someone was going to assume the property. I'll keep an eye on them.
So, at this point, no action taken on either one of those issues?
The mining, I did, I did shoot an email out to the Safe Fire Marshal's Office just asking if there's any part of that was in my wheelhouse, which I don't think it is. I think it, it's like OSHA, but I think it's called NESHA for mining.
Emcha.
Emcha. And when they, when they got their permit to have a pit, I believe that's all inclusive.
So, he should be sounding. More warning, warrants at half an hour, fifteen and five minutes.
I don't know how far you're off.
I may know that.
They should also, you know, try to see what's more important than this, if they're going to be blasting.
Do we know how far this neighbor is from the pit?
Quite a ways. She's, if that's what I think it is, she's in, in by Phil, the mechanic, on that side road. Lives Fred Kraus's wife.
Couple miles?
Dockshire Road, yes. And Howard Construction's on the other side of Route 23, with a mine in the ledge.
I don't believe it's anything the town's responsibility, but...
So, from what you know of it, Rob, you think they are supposed to be sounding before they blast?
Yes, they are.
And that's not happening?
Well, that's why I asked how far away this woman lives. It might be far enough off she's not here and sounding. I know there's supposed to be about a thousand foot safe zone or something like that.
Probably, yes. But, you know, I mean, actually, if they came in and pre-drilled it and then just came back and later and loaded the holes, then they have no means of...
Of sounding.
Yeah. The whistle's mostly on the drill rigs.
Yeah. Action-wise, do you think that we should just contact Brian and just ask him if he knows what protocol is or if there is a protocol he's supposed to be following?
Maybe.
Would we, would we let it lie? I, I don't want to, I don't want to skip over something that's valid, you know?
You said that you've emailed...
I put an email in the Safe Fire Marshal's Office just to see if there was anything in my wheelhouse, which I don't believe it is, but I'm, so maybe there is something I can do. And I really don't want to turn a guy into, to NESHA or OSHA or whatever it is for, for invalid.
No, I don't think so either.
So, I can give Brian a call if you want and just touch base with him concerning it?
Just ask him if there is a protocol, if he's aware of it, and if there is, can he use it? Maybe we'll do a notification when they're going to blast. I think this was a thing last time when they blasted there.
I think they run out of crushed ledge, and I think they've blasted.
I think there was some complaints last time that this happened too.
Well, one horrific thing is if she's on the horse, you know, in the course group, she could get thrown off. But also, if the horses are just out in the pasture, she would bring them in so that they wouldn't injure themselves.
And go through the fence.
Also, yeah, so...
So, basically, all she wants is a phone call or something to say they're going to do it.
Yeah, that's basically all she wants.
Yeah, he very well, I'd just call them, let those concerned citizens see if he wants to do it.
Are they doing this every day?
I have no idea.
Period?
Just periodically from what she said.
I think it's just picked back up because of demand for crushed ledge. It's gotten high now. It's run out, I believe, is what I was told by a couple contractors. There's a chance it's an employee doing it anyway, and he has no idea.
I was up there the other day, and they don't have any inventory. I was up there the other day, and they don't have any inventory up there.
Yeah, that's... So, Michelle, you're going to make that call to Brian and just ask him if, if there is a protocol and if he can follow it, so...
Sure, yeah, I can do that.
In item C, let us see if item four we're going to move back to at the end of the meeting. It's going to take some time to, to read and sign the abatements. Moving on to item six, old business. Item A, we had, we had discussed this in previous meetings and have heard some conversation on the ATV signs on our public roads. Larry Daggett's been asked to come in. He's, he's got quite a bit of experience with the powers that be in the ATV world, so we just wanted to hear from Larry and see what he had to say.
If Mr. Haley would like to go ahead of me, I would let him do that if he's going to be short, because I may be just a little longer than he is. And if you want to go ahead, Mr. Haley, you could?
Yes, you can. Yes, I can. I don't know that I'm going to be short.
Well, we'll move on to Rob Haley, and this is Rob's concern is our plans as a town for the memorial lot.
Well, I'm sort of representing the past interests of the Sandville American Legion. I was contacted by Eddie Grant back in 2018 that they wanted to address the memorial lot here in town. They wanted it fixed up, you know? New sidewalk and stuff, giving access to it. And they had all the money they needed to do, to pay for the, to pay for the projects. So, I looked at it in 2018 and got some rough measurements and stuff, and then I never pursued beyond that for a little bit. And then in 2019, the end of, in December of 2019, or the first of 2020, I got a call from Eddie, and he said that the Legion had left a check with the town of Sanderville for the purpose of upgrading the monument. And that check was dated 12/17/2019, and the amount of the check was thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. And so, and Eddie had called me and said that what they had done, and they had the check in that year, early 2020. I think Eddie was, in 2019, was being diagnosed as having Alzheimer's. And so, his children wanted him to come to Matthews and live with them, and Eddie never came back. So, two, three years ago, I was told by a taxpayer in the town of Sandville the select board was using the money for paying their bills, waiting on tax money coming in. I don't know if that's true or not. But anyway, in the four to five years since I've had the check, there's been nothing done, no project put up to bid or anything. So, I've gone about and designed, you know, what they're, they were looking for to spruce up the area there, putting in pavers from the steps up, papers all in front of the monuments and the honor rolls, a new asphalt sidewalk going down to the parking lot. We can't make it handicapped accessible because there's not enough land there to get a grade in there. Looking to put a small ready scape for Dana Wall and the, where the flowers are going to go, new planting areas, and, you know, all be new gravel bases underneath everything to do that. Looking at about twenty-eight thousand dollars plus or minus. Just on my, I have quotes on, on the installation, papers and furnishing the walls and stuff like that, and, and the plantings.
And the pavement.
So, I had talked to Michelle about it. I had my idea, my thought process, and that this was not taxpayer dollars. You did not need to go out to the town voters. But she says that we have to. So, I just wanted to try to get this...
We have, if that's the case, we have a good opportunity coming right up. We're going to have another town meeting, so this is the time to be talking about it. We actually are going to have a budget meeting, town meeting, to fix some of our budget issues.
So, I reached out to the town office personnel earlier in the years passed here, and they just would all say they'd talked with selectmen, and I've never heard that. So, Michelle actually has done some research, found the money. There is approximately around thirty-one thousand left of the money. One thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, it's thirty-one thousand. It's an odd number, but...
So, where would the rest of it have gone? Is it used in other projects that the American Legion was involved with?
Uh, not from what I can, from what I can tell. From what I can tell, it's like being mow, using it for mowing and that kind of stuff.
Was it earmarked for that to begin with?
No.
Or this, or this renovation project is what it was for?
Right. That, and there is a clause somewhere in there about education.
List of SMAC trusts.
It's SMAC trust. So, somehow, it comes into the article that we found. Education comes in there as a scholarship somewhere. So, I don't see any of that coming out of the money on the town side. I have seen where in the warrant articles for the town, it would be like eight hundred dollars to parks. But they didn't do anything in the parks that summer. So, I'm not really sure. It's one of those accounts that in the 2022 book, we're not really clear on where that money is. But I did get an auditor, auditors to say that we have about thirty-one thousand left of that right money.
Okay. So, this, the work that needs to be done to it, we just have a contractor that's going to do it? Are you going to do it yourself, Rob?
Uh, no, I'm probably looking, you know, either Scott, that little sort of, or Dowd Hill Construction to do the work. I would oversee it for them, you know, the, the project. Tony Farmall would be doing the paper installations and the, and the ready scape walls and stuff, furnishing, doing the installation there. Or whether the town wants to put it up to bid.
That's, that was my concern is just, should it go out, should, to move forward to this, should we put together a bid package for the contractors so that it's not picking favorites? What are your thoughts there?
That's strictly up to the town. I just want to see it move forward, that's all.
And, and all fairness too. We, we started this over the winter. As far as, you know, he wanted to get the project done and get it started because it's, you know, Eddie, I don't know when he passed, but Robbie came to one of the meetings, asked the board, you know, what does he need to do? They said, get a, draw up some plans. So, for months, Robbie's been trying to get this project off the ground, and it's one hurdle after another. And so, that's a little bit of the background with all the meetings that they've come to.
So, where would we find whether this does or... You said you had, you had found where you think it needs the approval of the people to pull this out of that account and expend it?
No, I, I understood just like the grant money that we got for the forty-five thousand. That grant money was accepted by the board, but then had to go to the public to be able to spend it because it hadn't been in the regular budget. So, I was using that same philosophy with the thirty-one five. We've had it, it's been sitting in reserve. It's not part of our budget at town meeting. So, I don't know if the board itself can say, yes, go ahead and use the money, or do we need to go back to town meeting and say, yes, it's not part of our budget. It wasn't when we voted on it, but we want to do this project. So, I'm not sure if that's a little bit of an area that I wasn't positive on.
I don't know what you guys think. I think we're so close to a budget meeting with the town people. If we approve it and we ask the people and they approve it, we're not in trouble. If we do it any other way, we possibly could be in trouble by the sounds. Which were only what, three, two or three?
We're going to be about seven days because I have to post the warrant tomorrow for the meeting on the seventeenth.
Does that sound logical to put in front of the people?
That would be definitely worded.
I don't think it needs to go to bid as long as...
I don't either.
Rob, Robert's coming.
As long as we got somebody to oversee the project. I like the idea of people from town doing it.
You already, you already have Sandville.
If you find somebody that's not scheduled out till next year.
I just didn't want anybody feeling like their toes are stepped on, and they wasn't offered an opportunity, and didn't want that to come around and bite us.
I do think we should bring it to the town though. I mean, we had to bring the Angus King money to the town, probably.
I think, I think it's...
Well, it's only a few weeks out or a week out or whatever we're doing.
If it was going to be a whole year from now, we'd, we'd probably look to circumvent that process. But we're so close that it's just a matter of people raising their hands two weeks from now.
Right. So, the warrant that I have tonight, I can redo that. And actually, I think I might have put them, I think I might have already put him on there.
And I mean, I realize it's spent. I think it was spent the wrong way, and I think we need to try to figure out something to put that money back in that account.
Okay, so I did, I did actually put it on anticipating that you would be on warrant for that time. I put thirty-one five, but because I wasn't exactly sure what you were going to have for the price. But it's Article Eight, if you...
Not to exceed, I guess. Just on the off chance that the voters in town voted down, what happens then?
So, I think...
I mean, is it just, it doesn't happen now, and it can go another year and put it back in again?
This is my take. I'm not, I can't speak for these two, but my take is, as a board here tonight, we can approve to move forward with a plan for what you're asking for. I think we all agree that would be the best way to go, to put it in front of the town. Then there's just no gray area. We've, we've covered every track. We, we're trying to move forward from where we were and leave no place for animosity in our town. We want to just do everything the right way. And I can't see the town not, not authorizing it. But I think step one is for the board to authorize it. Step two is to put it on the warrant and ask the people. And if we run into that roadblock, then see if we need the people.
I'd say as long as the people know that the money was given for that purpose. I'd say as long as the people know that the money was given for that purpose.
Right, we need to clearly explain that and maybe even, your explanation was very good. I mean, I understood what you were saying. And maybe even at the town meeting, have you as a speaker to speak of it.
And Rob is not getting any money from this.
No.
No, he's seriously, he is not getting any money from this.
No, he's doing the right thing. Larry, you had a question?
No, I was gonna say the same as Lance, that it should be very clearly stated to the townspeople when they vote. This is money that was already there, it's not town funds. It is money from the Legion to have accomplished this previously. Needs to be done. With it's very clear that that money is not the town's money, it's the Legion's money for this project.
So before we can make a vote on it, the, the next thing we need to, to decide is should we, should we put it out to the people in town, the contractors that are here? Or should we just move forward to the plan that you've brought us? That's what we need to decide as a board and then we need to, to vote on it.
Robbie, you're gonna take charge of this and do the hiring and supervise it?
Well, for what, you know, for what I'm gonna hear, he has to put it out to bid, probably not.
And I think that's the difference. If we, if we take your proposal and you present it and we bring it to the people with you managing it and they vote for it, it's a done deal. You know, and that's, then there's just no gray area. You know, this, there's been some gray area with this gift and we need to clear it up. What are your thoughts?
I, I don't think we need to put it out to bid. I mean, both the people, he talks about as far as are local and then.
They're the right people for the right job.
But he's very good at what he does.
And he grew up in Guilford.
Right, yeah. So I mean, I'm, I'm on board with not putting it out to bid.
Okay. Your thing. So we've had our discussion on this, on this, we've gotta make a vote. What are your thoughts? If we put it on the warrant, bring it to the people, Rob Haley is the speaker to describe what's going on so the people have a clear understanding and his proposal for managing the project, him managing the project. Do we have a motion to, to do it that way?
Yeah, I make a motion. Second.
Okay, so so three have voted that Rob will bring his, bring his proposal on a warrant article to the next town meeting, explain it to the people and we'll follow his format that he's outlined to complete the project. Does that sound good to you, Rob?
Yeah.
Now, in the.
Feels like we're doing it.
Well, you did awesome tonight. Cause there's gonna be a few more people, that's all. In the event, for some reason that the people said no, at that point, then we'll go back and chase the legal end of it down and see if we do or don't need their authority. But I, I just think if we take everything for everybody to decide, if we move forward with a majority on everything we do that's messed up in this town, we're gonna solve it permanently. And I think this is a permanent solution.
Yeah, left to transparency, so nothing's left to do.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Rob? And you're willing to do it?
Yeah.
You're willing to oversee the job, willing to describe the job to the people at the town meeting? Okay, we can move on.
Put you right up from the big spotlight there.
Well, thanks, Rob, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Doug.
Terrible, we didn't have to bottom them, but first line of defense and Eddie's kids is the second.
Yeah. And let me tell ya, you don't want them here. Cause they are, they are adamant about this getting done.
And they should be.
Should be.
Yeah, because it was important to their dad and John and Cindy Hope.
Joe Grant.
Joe and Eddie both were.
I think the only one left in the Legion is Brad Ellis. He was, he was the commander here. Outside of that, he's none of the other numbers are even alive anymore.
Well, we'll do our best.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing the. Okay, well, we'll move on to line item A, which is Larry Daggett. And we're gonna have a conversation about the ATV signs on public ways.
Okay, so before Larry starts, before Jeff left, he told me that we needed to have access signs for ETVs where they can go, where they can't go. So Larry came in and tried to explain it to me as to all these different signs of where they need to go and where to buy them was my question. So that's why we have him here today to explain to you what needs to be done.
All right, so this is a little information packet for each of you. This starts out right off from the Maine Municipal Association's website. They just updated their information on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. So they updated their May two thousand five and then July two thousand seven legal notes. Been seventeen years since they've upgraded it. So apparently the Maine Municipal moves as slow as a lot of other government entities. So as Michelle said and as Jeff alluded to, I've been twelve years trail master for the Abbott ATV Club. Been through the winter on several towns, on several things here and I think that I can speak fairly clearly on the access routes. A little bit of a reason why that you would have access routes. Just some quick numbers. The economic impact of ATVs, the last numbers out of University of Maine. ATVs are seven hundred and thirty-eight million dollars contributed to the Maine economy. Snowmobiling is six hundred and eighty-three million dollars. Between those two, I can't imagine a town not being interested in having that type of economic activity shared with them. Okay? It's unbelievable, but there is also a town meeting at this time going on in Shirley with new select people and they are discussing voting to shut down all ATV access in the town of Shirley, which will block Abbott away from Greenville, Greenville away from Abbott, both of us away from the Forks. So many people have purchased properties in Shirley simply because there's ATVing and snowmobiling in Shirley, cause there are no businesses to speak of other than dovetail bats and a couple of little bait shops and stuff. So I can't imagine why nobody would be, why people would not be in favor of sharing that under guidelines and have their town benefit. Part of that benefit is in the way the grant money. In the year two thousand, the ATV grant money to help support the trails, the infrastructure that joins these roads and trails together, they started out with ninety-five thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars in the year two thousand. Twenty-twenty-four, we're putting four point four million dollars into the trail systems. That's a huge increase in twenty-four years. They've done a great job. The legislature has recognized it. Twenty-twenty-two, the last numbers for registered ATVs in the state of Maine, eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two. That's a lot of ATVs. That's a lot of gas money, that's a lot of people passing through. And if you can get them coming through, at the very least, perhaps they're gonna wanna buy properties and contribute to the tax base. We all know what happened with the recent revaluation. That's part of the reason people are moving to this town because of recreation activity. Okay? So that, the MMA document that you have is a question was posed to Maine Municipal from a local ATV about opening local roads. Must or may the board, is a town vote necessary? The answer, the municipal officers, a select board or town and city council may, but are not required to open specific roads to ATV use. This decision rests exclusively with the board. Okay? It isn't something that can go to town meeting and be voted on and vote by town. It is exclusive with the board. The board can sign it out, get an opinion. The board makes the decision. The reason the board makes that will come clear in a few moments. Okay? So if you folks can have this and this is the Maine Municipal's answer, all right? Now, if you skip up two pages, you're gonna come to its subsection one, three, one, five, seven, eight, operation of ATVs under Title twenty-nine. This is, this is the state law that covers what you folks need to know. So we're not gonna go through this whole law, but I would like to go, it covers the operation of ATVs. I'd like to go to page two, section six, operating on a public way. Okay? Except as provided in subsection, a person may not operate an ATV on, under Title twenty-nine A on any portion of a public way, maintained or used. How do you get that? If you go to section six A, a properly registered ATV may be operated on a public way only the distance necessary, but in no case to exceed five hundred yards, fifteen hundred feet. Okay? And that is to be done on the extreme right of way, purpose of crossing as directly as possible a public way, bridge, overpass, underpass, sidewalks or culverts. It has to not interfere with traffic and go with traffic on the public way. Go down, skip a little bit to section D. This one here is in an interesting thing because you folks have some town ways that are not maintained for vehicle traffic. And this, this contributes and covers that. An example would be like the section of Townhouse Road, the Townhouse Road is closed. Okay? So the law says an ATV may be operated on a public way that is not maintained or used for the operation of conventional motor vehicles. Except that operation on the left side of the way is prohibited during the hours from sunset to sunrise. So in other words, you folks by default would actually, if it is a town way that is not maintained, but like the Townhouse Road, there was no reason for that to be a no ATV path. Especially if it connects two other roads. I believe that's what the Sangerville ATV Club did. You folks used to have an ATV club in your town. A previous board had approached our club and we don't have any trails that come close to touching one to you folks. So we declined. We suggested Dover's Club or Dexter's Club, possibly even Parkman to be the club. And they said, if there's no club responsible, we aren't going to do it. Well, if you read this whole law, you will see there is no reason that a club is necessary. It falls on the select board to make the decision to open or close roads. It's very handy to have somebody maintaining a trailing between, which is where your Dexter or Dover clubs would come into play. Again, we still have nobody coming there. Our trails do not come to this system. We stop on the High Street side of Guilford. Okay, we're on the other side of the river.
Larry, did I answer your question?
Yes.
I deal with this in Parkman a lot. Had a guy, uh, came out and bought a giant section of land, Larry, if you remember, where the trail was, bought both sides. Had to do a lot of digging. If the road was discontinued by the town pre-nineteen sixty-four, then the land reverts back to the landowners.
Correct.
So this guy bought, owns the trail and wanted to shut it down.
Correct.
Luckily, he is working with a club to maneuver it around his new house. But something like a Townhouse Road, I would wonder where that plays with the landowner.
It all comes down to, was it pre-sixty-four, post-sixty-four? Is it still listed even though it was discontinued? Is it in the records that it was discontinued? And that's, there's a very big argument.
Wait, have to have Scott get into the old butt paperwork.
Very much. There is, uh, on the DOT website, if you dig into it, there is information specific to maps showing these different things. It's, it's quite a process to go through, but it can be done and the people in Augusta can help do that. Cause we've done it down through, we've actually went to a school on that.
Right.
How to get there, but you're absolutely right. Okay, so just wanted to bring that to your attention, that if you have any roads similar to that. Guilford and Abbott both have the Government Farm Road and the Howard Siding Road. They meet at Howard Siding Road comes down and at the Guilford-Abbott line, it changes to the Government Farm Road. They have been doing maintenance on that. Because they have been doing maintenance on it, but it is not maintained for vehicle traffic. It's maintained for fire protection of the public lands. And it is open to trapping, walking, the land is open. Because of that, we, we have a, we have a permit with them just to cover our butt. But legally, we don't even need the permission to use that because it is open to the public. So the real crux of everything you folks are asking about is if you go to section H and I am gonna read a part of this. Notwithstanding paragraphs A through G, an ATV may be operated on the extreme right of a public way as directed by the appropriate governmental unit. Okay? Within the public way of a municipality or an unorganized or unincorporated township. Okay? So we're gonna skip over a little bit to it and it says, a public way designated by an appropriate government unit as an ATV access route must be posted conspicuously at regular intervals by that government unit with a highly visible sign designating the ATV access route. Okay? It does not mean that the ATV club does it. We helped on our towns of, we've got roads in Parkman, Abbott, Guilford, Monson and Kingsbury. We, our club has roads that are open for our use. We have contracts, I'll give you an example of that. But it is not, cause I've been to different meetings where they have said, well, we're only going to open a road, but the ATV club must provide the signs. The law says if you are going to open in that public way as an ATV access route, it must be posted conspicuously by that government unit. Okay? Before designating a public way as an ATV access route, the appropriate governmental unit shall make appropriate determinations that ATV travel may be conducted safely and will not interfere with vehicle traffic on the public way. For the purposes of this paragraph, appropriate governmental unit are the municipal officers within their respective jurisdiction. That is your legal right as a board. You are the governmental unit. That's why it's highlighted in your papers. Okay? The other part of that that I would really like to bring to your attention is there is a huge talking point, if you will. If you talk with Sheriff's Department, they say, oh, it's an ATV, so it's going to be Warden Service. You talk with the Warden Service, it says, oh, well, that's on a public highway, so it's a sheriff's office. It states very clearly that the municipal, which you folks do not have a municipal law enforcement, or county law enforcement officials having jurisdiction, have primary enforcement authority. The sheriff's office, if you're having trouble with speeding, the sheriff's office is the ones that are legally required to be taken care of.
And that, I'll, I'll, that is a quagmire of, of an issue.
It is.
Because, and I've been involved with every town here when it comes to ATVs and enforcement. And some people in clubs have put out courtesy speeds, twenty-five miles an hour per se, on a forty-five mile an hour zone. We cannot enforce that.
Correct.
Because it's an ordinance. Or it's a generated club rule. So technically, they're allowed, they're allowed to run the same as cars are.
Correct.
And in statute, there's no area for a single ounce speeding of an ATV. It's only a motor vehicle.
If you go to section ten of this law, you will see reckless operation of an ATV. "A person may not operate an ATV in such a way as to recklessly create a substantial risk of serious bodily injury to another person." If you go to section eleven, "Operating ATV to endanger, a person may not operate an ATV so as to endanger any person." The first one is a class D crime, the second one is a class E crime, and number twelve is "Operating ATV at greater than reasonable and prudent speed." "Person may not operate an ATV except at a reasonable and prudent speed for the existing conditions. Person violating this subsection commits class E crime." They can be cited for those reasons. Unfortunately, the majority of the time, if we do ever get a citation written, when it goes to the district attorney, gone. Gets thrown out. Supposedly, there are many more important things to handle than ATV. Same. Okay?
Look at what you're referring to.
Yep.
The enforcement of it.
Yep. Mike and I are both on the same page. So very often, you get people complaining on Facebook and media, "Oh, the ATV clubs aren't doing anything about this." We have absolutely zero authority to do anything on the roads or even the trails. And Mike is correct with the idea that if you put out a speed sign, it is a suggestion, because it is not codified into law. The ATV trails themselves have no speed limit.
And that's whether it's done as a club, or as, as-
As a town.
A select board.
Does not matter. The only way you can do that, Greenville can do that, because they have their own police department. What you're hearing about Milo is going through, that was just in the news, saying, "We are gonna crack down." Milo has their own police department. They can do that. They can do a town ordinance, they can enforce the town ordinance. You folks don't stand a chance. You have no, you have no recourse other than the sheriff's department.
So, if we were to post speed limits on these roads as a suggestion, and the sheriff clogs, "This is twenty-five mile an hour zone, a sign," and, and the sheriff clocks him at forty miles an hour.
He's not gonna do a thing.
No.
Sheriff himself is not gonna do a thing.
Parkman has the suggested speed limits.
We can put suggested ones up.
Which is good. We have several roads open to ATV. But once they know that, that can't be enforced, now they're going to knock where the cars are.
Correct. In a sense, you don't want them going slower than the vehicles, because you're impeding the vehicle traffic. You need that flow of traffic maintained. However, what we have found, if you open a road, across the board, if you open a road, people naturally slow down. Other than that, two or three percent that are idiots anyways. The majority are gonna slow down, because they're not afraid of being stopped. Because it's an ATV road. They're gonna slow down and they're gonna go.
We have several roads that are open now.
Yes. And this is where this came up, is how is that sign? Which is a perfect, uh, perfect segue to come into after section twelve, is the signage. Right before that, I'd like to take your attention to, in your packet, you have an example of, uh, with the town of Guilford. I believe yours is town of Guilford. You have a contract. This is what we do with the towns as our club. It clearly states who is responsible for what.
Gotcha.
Okay? That's, that's what that contract is for. Any, any question on that as you briefly go down through that contract?
So this contract is an agreement between
A club.
The board and the club.
Yes.
For the club to take over this duty?
No.
Okay. Now I'm not, I'm unsure what you're saying then.
Okay. That gives us the right and responsibilities about if we see a bunch of trash that's being generated by ATV traffic, we need to clean it up. We need to make sure that the signs are up. The town still has to pay for them. Unless, like we do, we're not required to. But we kick in a lot of money. I mean, these signs right here, the, I'll tell you the one that's, this one right here is the man cave one. These babies disappear like candy off of the signposts. The last ones of these I bought were twenty-six bucks a piece down to White Sign Company. Okay? They disappear. So what you have is you have an access route, half mile, conspicuously at reasonable intervals. Okay? If you've got a long stretch like Silver's Mills Road, there probably would be three or four of these down there. An example would be, so coming off from twenty-three onto the end of Silver's Mills, you have a begin access. It's not necessarily to tell the ATVs, it's to tell the public traffic, they're going to share the road with ATVs. So I'm gonna be begin access. Okay? Down on the other end, where Fringe's Mills comes on to seven, down in Dexter, end access. So typically, you have these setting like this for traffic. Traffic, it's entering onto that road, it begins. Traffic leaving the road, it's end access. And that's for both the traffic and to help the ATVs. Along the way, let's say that on the Silver's Mills Road, you have traffic coming off the Townhouse Road. Okay? Townhouse Road not being open. If it's not open. As an example. Coming off from Townhouse Road, they come on to Silver's Mills Road, this is just to acknowledge to those people, there's an access route that they're joining with their public. Okay? Is that clear? You, you got that Joshua Wiley's that way? This is the stuff the state provides us. Okay? That's one that just tells it, it's an ATV trail, and how wide it trail's gonna be. Typically, one of these, it's trail information. Quite often, there's one of those right below those, and it will tell you in our club, what we're doing. What is coming? You know, is a trail intersection going to Monson? Next one is gonna be the French Connection Trail. It's, where is some gas located? Where's some food located? It's information on the trail. You got corners and stuff, you gotta tell them where they're going. This is what we have to do on our road system, if you will, with trails. You folks already have arrows on your roads. Okay? We do these, that's just to respect the landowner thing. Unfortunately, we do put up quite a few of these too, no ATV. Not allowed. So, some of our trails, the landowner says, "No motorcycles." So we have to put up no motorcycles.
That include dirt bikes, or is that just motorcycles?
Dirt bikes. It's, it's for dirt bikes, yes. Sometimes you have to remember people not to spin the hell out of the trails. And then you have us, different types of caution signs, you know, we have ones that we, we designated them as bridge cautions. There might be a gate ahead, that's gotta be, pay your attention to. Might be an intersection ahead. You need to pay attention to that. You already have these up, right? Stop ahead. You should on the roads, as a warning that there's gonna be a stop sign. And for us, when we're putting these up, we're in the midst of a major resigning effort. When we come to put one of these stops up, and it's at a road crossing, we list what the road is. And right below it, we put the GPS points. So in case somebody has had an accident, or they're broke down, or they need help, they come to a stop sign, and they get cell service, they can tell nine-one-one, "I'm at this location." Okay? So that's, that's what we do for signing. Some of that would be handy, but signs cost money. Would we be putting up as many signs if the state wasn't providing me packs of those at a time? Maybe not. Maybe not as many. But because we do have that, we're just putting up so that you know where it is.
So this first pile of signs, the state provides the club, and I would assume they would provide the town?
These, these cannot be used on a road, because they are not DOT approved.
Just, just trail signs.
That's why these are so expensive, is they're DOT, they're aluminum, they're reflective.
Yep, okay. That makes sense.
That's, that's why, you know, like I said, I've bought, usually buy at least a dozen or two at a time, and we've, that's actually how Sangerville got their signs, was, we had some and when the Sangerville Club was trying to get started, we had, like I said, I ordered packs of them. And we got the Sangerville Club established with all their signs.
And the Sangerville Club no longer exists.
My information is it no longer exists, and the one question I would have from that, when they closed the club, what happened to the money in the treasury? One of your former select people was the club president, so you should be able to track that down hopefully.
Would that money have anything to do with the town? Could that be the club's money, right?
It'd be the club's money, but where did it go?
The town wouldn't be able to-
Could that be, do, could that be donated to the town? If there's no club, could that money be donated to the town from that defunct club to help purchase some of these signs?
Do you have any idea when that club fell apart?
Why?
Any idea when it did?
Uh, about three years ago.
Three years.
It was definitely two years ago. That club fell apart because the state came out and said, "As a club, you have to have insurance." And when they found out they had to pay for insurance, which right now it costs us about twelve hundred a year, they said, "Oh, we're not gonna do that." The whole, my opinion, the whole reason that club was, came into being, was they wanted some roads open so they could go from their houses to Dover. Because if you look at the majority of where the roads are, they all connect into Dover. There were one that doesn't, is McPhee's Road. And that's because it went and connected into the Parkman Trail system.
Wasn't Alex Robinson here this spring? Weren't you here for that? I remember.
When they wanted to open some roads.
That was Dover Rovers, right? He's, isn't he's-
Alex is the club president for Dover Rovers. He and I work quite well together.
I wonder if we should approach Alex and see if his-
You may not have the answer to this question. You just mentioned that if we have a club, they have to have insurance, it's twelve hundred dollars a year. Where do we stand as a town if we have ATV access on our public ways and have no insurance?
You do not need insurance. Under the main tort claim, um, I thought I had that saved up.
So the town assumes no liability?
That's correct. Right here, on the very first page, under the main municipal association, bottom of the page, it says, "Also, although factors such as safety, noise, and dust may be legitimate considerations in making their decision, potential liability is not. Under the Main Tort Claims Act, neither municipalities nor their officials can be held liable for discretionary acts, such as designating ATV access routes." See Maine State, Maine Revised Statutes Annotated fourteen, subsection eight one oh four dash B, paragraph three. I tried to cover all of those anticipated
Questions and-
problems that you could encounter.
Now, the other thing that, that I remember about this is, from here, we've got roads that can't be opened, like Moosehead Trail.
Any road that is DOT winter, or summer, or year-round maintenance is DOT authority to open or close. And no road may be opened with a greater than fifty mile an hour speed limit.
So that's about the problem. We have trails that just dead end.
Correct.
On Burrows Road.
Correct.
Comes up to Brian Campbell's, boom, then go by my house all so long.
Yep.
And then they see him downtown at the intersection of one map, and, "Here we go."
Yeah.
It doesn't stop most of them, all of them, some of them.
I think if you talked with my wife, she would confirm that whether it's getting older, or maturity, or what the factor is, but I have mellowed greatly in the last three or four years of being upset about seeing ATVs on the road. It used to bother me tremendously. Enough so that I was becoming a problem to other people. So, I don't have any authority. I don't have any responsibility for that.
Greenville's everyone's talked to, and they open all of their roads for daylight, driving down after dark.
Correct. And that, I'm glad to brought that out. Because Greenville has their municipal police department, they can set curfew hours on their roads. You folks do not have a municipal. You cannot set a curfew on your roads. Because under the state law, there is no curfew when you cannot ride the trails. Other states have curfews, it's state law, you can't ride at night. Maine has left it open to ride at night. If you look on our trail systems, it will say, "Road closed ten PM to six AM." Suggested speed limit scenario. We suggest that people do that.
So at this point, at this point, the decision in front of us is what to do about ATV signs in our town?
Correct. If you have roads that are open, the first step is, inventory those roads, evaluate the signage that is on there, correct deficiencies with existing, before you try to make the step to open anything else. That's just my suggestion from-
So you're saying, one or all of us inspect the shoulders of the road to make sure there is room for them? Inspect the signage that we already have?
From the safety aspect, they are allowed to ride on the pavement. We act, we actually have some roads, that there are signs that say, "Stay on pavement, do not ride the shoulders." Stay on pavement. Because you erode the shoulders, you fall into the ditching, you create a problem dropping off the pavement.
Yeah, you can't drive on the shoulder in front of my house on Silver's Mills, because it's washed away.
Do we have a list of those? Inventory of roads, so to speak?
ATV accessible.
And that's where Jeff said, "Just make sure you get signs." And that's when I tackled Larry and said, "I have no idea, because I don't know the roads."
We don't even have a list of roads, we don't even know what's open and what's not open.
All I was told is all the roads are open.
I, I, I think they are all open, except for the line road.
If that was true, that should be in the minutes, records of meetings, somewhere is that that motion was made by the board and done.
And I've been told that over and over. All the roads are open.
So all, all roads that are not state? Not, that don't fall into the state's jurisdiction?
Like Delvey Hill, this DOT may have been.
So that's where I got lost with knowing what, like how many signs do we order? That type of stuff. That's why I need you guys to help.
Because if we can get Dover on board with us, and they have some funds, because he needs a year to try to help load two nights, they wanna see a trail two nights. because he needs a year to try to help go two nights, they wanna see a trail two nights.
Right.
Maybe if we try to get them on board with us and they can help push the trails two nights. And they can also maybe help with this.
Right, yeah. We use a trailer, two, three miles, and then, you know, the paint.
So we need to kind of wrap this up because we do have an executive session.
Nope, I'm fine, I'm done.
Thank you very much. I, they might need to have more time, but I'm just trying, I'm time-watching, that's all.
Nope, I finished it. My, my thing, the only thing on there was, uh, uh, thanks for having me.
Now, if you do get your signs from White Sign, is that correct? That's where those come from? Uh, yes, it does. It says it right on the bottom, and I can read that.
That's correct. Jeff, you guys need to hear anything else?
I don't believe it, man.
All right, I'm checking out. You know how to get ahold of me?
We do. Larry, thank you for bringing that in. Thanks for educating us.
Hopefully that answers, and if it doesn't answer, those are the laws to look up yourselves.
Okay.
And there it is.
Yep. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
So, back to our agenda. Are we making, are we making any moves on this, or are we, are we gonna look at the inventory of roads and then bring it to a future meeting? So you wanna table this with the intention of looking at our inventory of roads and then revisiting it at a future selectments meeting?
Do you want me to talk to Alex and see about how they could help us, if they can even help us?
I think, I think that's good. I think we, I think we as a group should look at the roads and talk to the other clubs. So let's get a motion together, what we're gonna do with this.
You should review your notes, you should review your past meetings and find out what action is done.
Okay.
You should find out.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. I wanna make a motion that we, that we tabled this to a future meet, meeting with the intention of contacting, as a board contacting the surrounding clubs and looking at the inventory of roads that we have to deal with, and then revisit this in a future meeting. You got a second? Hey, let's hold on. Matt's at plan. Okay. Moving on. Was you on? I think, I think I'd, I'd like to move the executive session further down so that Matt and Melissa don't have to sit here out in the parking lot waiting for us to finish.
That session involves her.
It does, okay. Okay. Then we will move on to it. So Matt, we're gonna have to ask you to step forward, get an executive session. This session is, is discussion which contains information contained in the records made confidential by stature. Title thirty-three, chapter thirty-one, subsection sixteen oh three, one oh eight, letter F.
Can I ask a question real quick before I go?
Yep.
Did you have on the agenda to ask them about the deal for the oil changes?
I have the, yes, I do.
If you could just let me know tomorrow?
I will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, executive session begins now. Thirteen, August seventh. The select board is exiting executive session. In the discussion, the decision's made, we are going to apply for grant money for computer system upgrades. The remainder of the executive session must remain confidential by stature. Moving on to item seven, new business.
Alex, so we have received Hamlin's, um, new contract to get us to December. We have a new packet, this is the original, so that you can sign it. And I have already, in the warrant that you signed tonight, paid the August bill for the one thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars. And sixty-six cents, I think it is, yes.
I'm wondering if somebody's missing one.
I'm sorry.
You guys both got your Hamlin services contract?
Okay.
So the information in this contract was brought forward in the, in the previous work session.
Yes, it was. In one of our work sessions, I believe it was after ten meetings, wasn't it?
It was. And this, this contract is gonna tie us over to the end of our fiscal year, which is in December. And then we'll be looking at a new contract, correct?
Yes.
This basically just finishes out this year.
Yes.
Because we are out of contract with him.
Right, his end date was on July thirty-first, was his end date for his contract for the twenty-three, twenty-four year.
And I think it's, I think it's important that we cover the, the the cost of this temporary contract is sixteen hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents per month until the end of the year. Which is more than the, than the previous contract, obviously.
That's your original.
Right. While I'm getting ready to sign.
Well, I don't think we have any choice. We, we cannot be without an assessor, a assessor and...
It's reasonable.
And it's a reasonable contract, I feel too. Yeah, contract is signed.
There's a date on there that probably...
Oh, okay.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Item B is budget committee. As we get closer to our next budget cycle, we, we as a board have had, people express interest in being on the budget committee. Discussion, I, I, I feel like we should have a sign-up sheet at the next town meeting for anybody interested. I'd make a motion that we have a sign-up sheet. Vote? Three votes.
Okay, so before you go ahead, um, we also need to do abatements and denials.
Yep.
I have two that probably need to have your signature. The first one is Philip Ganton, Ganton?
Gacom.
There you go. Um, this was his veteran exemption that he did not get on his tax bill this year. That's a total of seventy-one, twenty-two that we will actually write him a check back because he's already paid his taxes.
I just signed it.
Yep. And then we also have a supplemental tax. Um, Mark and Patricia Briswald, um, evidently something was missing. The lot was assessed to incorrect owner, so we need to send a bill out to them. The next thing, I think maybe you want to wait on the denials. At this point, um, you have copies of these in your packets. Give yourself a chance to look them over before you have to sign the denials, unless you wanna do that tonight.
I think we've, we're halfway through our meeting and it's only after eight.
Okay. That's, that's my thought too. Okay, so what's the hold on that?
Okay, so we've covered the abatements and signed them, the denials we have not yet looked at. Okay. Item C, the special town meeting warrant. Town meeting August seventeen, nine AM, at the Grace Bible Community Room.
So the plan was originally to have you sign this tonight so I can post it, but with Mr. Haley's, um,
Addition?
Article. Um, I need to do some rewriting of that, so if, um, I'll give you a call or text. Have you guys come in? Is there anything else? I did add article ten to, you have copies of this somewhere in your packets. Um, I had kind of put in, um, ten thousand dollars to use for the general government account just for cushion, um, from what I'm seeing with Sims and my salary. Um, it looks like by the end of the year, you're gonna go negative on hours, but there might be some cushion there depending on the town manager position. So the ten thousand is just for a cushion to make sure that everything's taken care of in the town government account. Do you have that?
I don't think I got that, Michelle.
Did you find it, Jeff? Maybe it's in the back.
Do, do we know how much on article five? How much of that is? I'll, I'll start off with, I, I, I got a phone call from Jason Higgins today. And he just wanted to make sure that there was about a thousand dollars after the lawn mowing and the porta potties.
Oh, yes.
One dugout road needs about three hundred dollars. Finished painting the dugouts, about a hundred and fifty dollars. Cracks to the basketball court for ceiling, two hundred and fifty dollars, and three hundred dollars for field maintenance, which comes to about a thousand dollars.
Okay. I would actually have to run some figures with that. Um, I think the fifty-four figure came from last year's budget. And it was just a carry, like that's what it's been raised for a while.
We can't raise that anymore at this point anyway, can we?
Not from the original figure. That was the, part of the original budget. But that article never even got on to be voted at town meeting, so...
Technically, it's no article.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, but I, I mean, I would like to see at least after the mowing and the bathrooms. It'd be nice to give them a thousand dollars they're asking for, you know? That you put a lot of effort in down there.
Yeah, right now it looks like you have two thousand thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents left in this account. Might be like more, because you've got negative there, so you're about, about fifteen hundred left in that account. And that's with mowing. I think you have, August has been paid, September and October, so you have two more payments on, on, um, mowing down there. So now would be the time to change that price if that's what you want to do.
Do we know how much the mowing is at, if you...
I can't look at just this one because mowing, when he mows, there's like six accounts it hits. And it's broken out per account. I wanna say it's three hundred dollars.
So mowing's gonna throw half that, fifteen hundred.
Yeah. But I can get to a better price tomorrow?
What were you guys saying?
Guess we really gotta know what's in that account before we can talk about it.
Right.
Yeah, well, you have two thousand thirty-three forty-seven minus seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
That's what's there right now.
Right now. This is printed, I printed, that's just while we can mow her. The only things I don't know is exactly what the porta potty is gonna be. I just paid a bill for two hundred and ninety. So you've got, what, two more months? I don't know when they pull them out. Because you have fall sports, right? So what do they, I don't know if they use them down there?
Yes, they, they do. Well, they did do soccer down there.
So...
It doesn't sound like there's enough in that, what they'd like to do.
No, I mean, I guess, I mean, I'd like to see that number raised. Two hundred and six, six thousand, I mean, that's...
Well, I think what happened was, there was some mess up there with Jason was coming to, to do the budget with Jeff. He gave us a list of what he would like to see done down there. But what he didn't realize was the electric for the lights, the mowing and all that comes out of that budget. So I don't think that was ever factored in at the same time that Jeff and, and Jason were working on the, on the budget. So I know Jason gave us a figure, you want, you wanna do all the things you said.
Right.
But none of the electricity and any of that was plugged in.
Right.
So you want, do you wanna put like two thousand to that?
On top of this?
Yeah. Or just go up, or just go up to... Because the six thousand's only getting... Cause the six thousand's only gonna give you another four hundred and sixty dollars, right? No, not even that.
Four hundred and sixty dollars.
I was just calculating what was left and trying to figure out what we were gonna spend and.
Yeah.
If there would be enough left over, but.
Cause I mean, your electric really isn't that high down there.
No. That should basically be service fee.
You've only got ninety-seven dollars left for electric down there.
What do you thought?
We could go to seventy-five, forty. So change this one, cause I'm gonna, this is the whole year, so if I change that to seventy-five, forty. That's gonna give you two thousand dollars more on this side. Then you have about four thousand thirty-three left.
To do the improvements and operate it till the end of the year.
Yeah.
Right.
And I can double check those figures when I get to the work, to work in the morning before you sign the warrant.
I mean, and he's only asking for basically a thousand bucks of that.
Right.
Yeah, I guess we'd have to know the final figures to know how much to.
Right.
Raise it.
So, so we're gonna leave this article here. Um, and before we sign the warrant for the meeting, we're gonna.
I'll get you the figures first thing in the morning.
We do that by email.
And we can change that, yeah?
Just to hone in on, I find your number there.
Right, yeah.
Doing what's gonna be done.
No, I mean, I know we're tight, like, it just, there's, there's a pile of people I feel has put a lot into that. Down there, it'd be good to see them be able to do something with it, you know?
And we're gonna have that community day down there, which I think is gonna be neat, just to start raising awareness about it.
Right.
Get the people down there and see what's there. Okay, so. Everything else? We agree with how it's written on the warrant, the special town meeting? In article eight, you are gonna, you're gonna come up with a rewrite on that.
Yeah.
Like we, just as we discussed in the meeting.
I was just gonna ask about that, cause I, I really don't like the fact that we spent that money on lawn mowing, when that. If that's what we spent it on, you know, that's, boys. That's terrible.
It is. The good news is, I think the way that Rob is going to do it, input, his input in it. Is gonna save the amount, out of money that, that was lost, so.
Right.
It looks to me like the whole project will still be completed.
Right.
Which was the initial goal of the, of the gift to begin with. So I mean, it's a, it's a blunder, but it's still gonna come out the way it should.
Right.
Yes, I, I think, other than those corrections.
Okay.
Then we'll, uh, you're gonna try to get through that and we'll all come in sometime in the morning afternoon.
I'll give you, uh, either text message or something, let you know that it's done and ready for your review.
Yeah, text works good.
Okay.
I'm not really buying my computer. Okay. Moving on. What do we got for topics on it? Okay, item D is Flanders Hill issue, um. We've got a wash up in front of Peggy Cleaves.
And that culvert that, we filled in a little bit, it's, it, all the time is giving a little more and giving a little more.
That's how like Kemp's work shot down there.
I found some stuff about that the other day, when we ground that road. Must be going on ten years ago now, there was so much asphalt on that road, that they couldn't grind all the way through it. So what I think has happened there is, there's a, we have a layer, we have gravel, we have a culvert gravel, a layer of asphalt. Grindings.
And gravel.
Well, we would have had asphalt again, but, yes, and then gravel on top, so. Where we think it's, I think it washed right out underneath the pavement that's still there. That's a foot below the surface, foot and a half below the surface. And I think that pavement's given out and that's why we're getting them a little bit of sinkholes, so that really needs to be addressed.
So.
Did we figure out for sure if we have the authority?
That's gonna be my question. Do we have the authority to? Assign somebody to fix this?
I think if it's safety issue.
Public safety issue.
Right, then I think the board, we don't have a town manager. Otherwise it would be their job.
We don't have a road commissioner.
We don't have a road commissioner.
And we got a road that's unsafe to drive on.
So I think it's.
Somebody drove into the one in front of Peggy's. I went by the other day and all three cones were right together, coming up the hill, they must've run into it at night or something, and. You could see one tire going over the edge, luckily, they must've been where they could save.
That's a deep ditch.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um. So who? Who would we dispatch to fix that?
I'm, to me, Scott Reynolds already been involved.
He's already done the other repairs on that road.
Well, he got called in on that hole, you know?
He got called in on that hole, you know, to, to me, that's almost kinda ongoing, anyway. He's just been.
And that comes out of the road budget, which is plenty of money in there to fix it. I say we, we'd be brave and make the call, I'd make a motion, we'd make the call to have Scott go fix it.
Who's gonna oversee? Or do we all go take a peek and?
I guess, this is just a unprecedented reason.
Right.
Well, I think you know more about the road, cause you've done a little bit of research.
Right.
I mean, you guys could go with it, you know, hash it out, I mean, but.
I think that if Scott's got questions, you and him ought to discuss it, and I think when it's done, we all would all look at it.
Okay.
That's what I think.
Do we replace? That culvert that's plugged out?
If we're doing it.
Access, not, not the one going across the road.
Yeah.
The access into, do we replace it or we pull it for now and decide later? What we're gonna do about it with the situation we're in right now? Cause that's not a safety issue.
Right.
You know?
I wouldn't, I would. Think, leave it at the discretion of the professional, knows what he's doing. It's gonna create a problem, we need to fix it. If it's not, then.
Then we'll rip it up twice.
Yeah, well, that, that, the other call we're talking is where the water flows beyond the road, right?
No, just the, the. The ditch, it's basically the culvert and ditch, it's the access onto. It'd be the east side of, like, the lawn.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a driveway access, if it was driveway, I'd say yes, when you tear it out and put it right back.
That's an access just to the field, right?
And the edge of her lawn, yes.
Hmm, I don't know what our responsibility is for that, do you?
It, all it states in our. Culvert. Yeah, policy is, uh. One. Twenty footer.
Per residence.
Per residence.
But that's probably not even Peggy's, that's probably not even on her land plot for her house.
It, it, it's on the lawn, basically, it's right at the edge of the field. But they also, if, if that's what we're gonna go by, there's another access down below. Right where they're crossing for the stream coming out of Meyer Pond is.
That's the normal.
That's the access they use, right, that's the normal trail crosses. I mean, we, we have culverts, we have, and we, we have been using plastic on the. Driveways and access points, we have a pile of. Plastic culverts behind the garage, we also have some smaller steel ones.
Do we, do we approach Peggy or Toby, whoever's in charge of the farm stuff? And see what they think?
Yeah, that would probably be good.
Cause if they say we never use it, we don't care about it, let's take it out, it might be a problem again.
Right.
So. I, I, I would say we have a conversation with them about it, and. This happened because of this plug culvert, do you use this culvert? They don't, stay it out.
Yeah. Okay, so you want me to call Scott and get that lined up and then? Talk to Peggy, and if she says, talk to Toby, I'll talk to Toby, or Bill, whoever.
Yeah, whoever's.
Yeah.
I'd be all in favor of taking it out, if they don't use it.
I, I know from discussions with Scott, that's what he would like to see, it would be. For the amount of water that ditch sees, it would be better.
It, it's created a monster already.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've. We'll cease discussion, um. Gonna make a motion to, to have, uh. Josh contact Scott on doing the repairs. And contact the Cleaves farm to find out if we can remove that culvert. And once the repairs are done, the three selectmen will go inspect as a group. We have a second to that?
Sure.
And vote, it's a vote for three.
Since we are on culverts, we had a couple come in with a bill. For the Japin Corner Road. Um, the culvert that was there was plugged. And they replaced it themselves. So this is the bill, I've talked to a couple of you, I believe, about this situation. I'm not sure what your decision.
I've seen it, yeah.
What are they asking for?
Just the cost of the culvert. Although the policy says town to put in, I mean, resident to put in the first culvert, town maintains after that. They said, because we didn't have a town manager, we didn't have a road commissioner, they took it upon themselves to replace the culvert. They never came into the office that I'm aware of and made an official complaint that the culvert was plugged. Um, when they did, they did say that they mentioned it in April, but Jeff was there at that time, he would've gone right out and tended to it, so. I don't know for sure.
Is it put in right?
I, I, I feel that it is, yes.
Yeah, I looked at it too, I, I thought it was a good job.
Even, I was up in there the other day just to, to see if they took my recommendation, and they did, he, he took the time to pick up. Bunch of four inch. Small rocks, must've been from around his driveway, and he lined the ditch. Where the water's gonna flow out of that, so it doesn't ruin the ditch, I mean, and that was after the fact, what, what I had talked to him about, so.
Again, this is out of our wheelhouse as selectmen, but with a lack of a town manager. Or a road commissioner.
Right. Do we happen to know what the price of, what our price on a twenty-five foot, ten inch culvert would be?
I did not know that.
Yeah, I'm sure he probably just paid retail at a hardware store for it.
Right.
I know there's a, he, he had a discount, that's why he had mentioned the tenth.
Has to be paid by the tenth.
He has a discount until the tenth. I don't know how much the discount is, I don't. At least.
Looking.
That's what I've been told.
Looking at the other side of it, if we went and addressed that, we would've had a wheel, a load of gravel. We'd have a machine out there, you'd have somebody out there for three, four hours. How many dollars now?
So it was a proper culvert?
Yes, it was, it, it's right to spec what was in there, yeah. And, and he was right. That it needs to be changed, what, what he has left there, he left the old culvert, it's plugged from one end to the other.
All right, and the road was, he rode it out and they filled that in too.
Yeah.
I guess, I mean, it's, I don't think it's totally within our, our normal authority, but somebody's gonna do it.
Yeah, I, I, I just think we need to make it known that we do have a policy that.
There's a protocol.
Does somebody put it on our page?
What's that?
Does somebody put it on our webpage?
Um. The actual ordinance is on our webpage, yeah.
I think we just need to make it clear that this is, this isn't how this is normally done.
Exactly.
Um, there's a protocol you've gotta follow. But also, you know, my only fear of it is setting precedent for the next person to do it, everything you do sets a precedent. The other side of it, I went out and visited it and. It absolutely needed to be done.
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't wrong.
And he didn't, and he didn't just throw it in there?
No.
He took, he took the time to it.
Yes, but I mean.
Well, they graded up the size, it, it looks exceptional, it looks good. William?
I mean, I've, uh. Being that it's just a culvert, I'm, I'm all for paying it, but I do think we need to sit, let people know and, and when we. If, if we do, we'll pay this, we need to tell him, well, this, this is a one-time deal, if this happens again without.
Right.
Our permission, you know?
Once you've got a, once you've got a road commissioner and a town manager, then people will have a chain of people to go through.
Right.
And I understand what he was saying.
Yeah.
Who do I go to? The girl in the office that registers my car to fix my culvert, you know, there's. We didn't have a government in place when this happened.
Exactly.
We'll make a motion that we reimburse him for the culvert that he bought, and the rest is on him.
Sure.
Okay, so with that, your warrant that you signed earlier, I will be adding that bill to the end of the warrant. To bail.
Okay. That's still the damn. Okay, next item, I mean, salt and sand pile.
So. Chris is willing, CNW News is willing to. They, they don't wanna put a price in on delivering the sand, but they. Do want to mix it and put it up.
Okay.
And I've talked to a lot of contractors, I say a lot, a few contractors who plow. And they all said the same thing, the guy that plows, he should be the one putting it up because he can mix it, it's. Hot or cold, is he?
He knows.
Right.
Yeah.
He's willing to do it for a dollar fifty per yard, which we're looking at seventeen hundred yards.
So quick math.
And that's piled and covered, and I had, I discussed with him about covering it within one week.
So he's gonna get paid twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars to mix the sand?
Yeah, which. If the trucks that are delivering it decide to come over seven days, and we were paying them by the hour, well. We could have a fairly large bill, I. I liked the per yard idea, you know?
Mm-hmm, that's a fixed price.
Right. Uh, and I have called quite a few people, they said they'd get back to me, the only one that has got back to me is Ellen M., who delivered last year. And they will do it for the same price they did last year, which is sixteen dollars a yard, and I. Honestly don't believe that we're gonna find anybody even close to them. By the sounds.
Seventeen hundred yards, you said, right?
I actually have a.
Twenty-seven, two?
I didn't get a chance to print it off, but, um. If you guys wanna see that. And he. They are willing to get. Right on it, they have a slow time for the next week or two.
Yeah.
That they were willing to.
And you've gotta coordinate that with News.
Right, and we gotta, I gotta coordinate it with, did we have a quote, did Jeff have a quote from building himself on how much it was?
Uh-huh, it's, um, eighty-one dollars a yard.
It was like, something like that?
Yeah, that's right.
Thought that sold a lot of his time. It sold.
Yeah, I can't remember, I, that. It's been pretty insane lately and I didn't have a chance to get into the, I almost stopped at five minutes to five last night, and I said, no, I'm not doing that. I stopped in at five minutes to five.
You should have, heaven, they bothered me. You should have that, all that road stuff should be in your packets. I'm not, this, not necessarily this time, it would've been a prior package, so it should've been. I'm not this, not necessarily this time, it would have been a prior package, so it should have been in your book there somewhere.
We've already bought in on the salt and that's kind of a fixed price, we already know how much it is and that's already done, we just need to decide on who's mixing it and who's hauling the sand. So L and M is the only one that called you back on?
As of right now, but I mean, I basically started calling. I wanted to make sure from Chris what he thought we needed.
Mm-hmm.
I thought we had closer to a thousand yards. He think there's somewhere between five and seven hundred up there.
Mm-hmm.
So we shoot for twenty-five hundred, so seventeen hundred's probably in the ballpark, that's probably what we ought to shoot for.
What's up there, is that already mixed or not?
It's already mixed, but it's never been covered.
Right.
And. It really probably should be.
Remixed.
Right, and I think that's kinda his plan is to put his excavator up there and just start veiling it in together as he's.
The problem is we're running out of time, like you said, there's a time window available that may not be able to help a later.
Well, I have told everybody, October first, it's gonna be all put up, delivered down by October first.
Okay, so you put a deadline on it?
I did, yeah, because I don't think that, we, I mean, there's a chance, we get fall rains mid-October, if it is. We're gonna have to be delivering sand, yes, we do have some, but it it's not a good time to be putting up sand.
Well, I think Chris said one year he did it in the weak areas usually.
Yeah, so as far as, if we opt to do this with L and M. We would have Chris and L and M have a conversation and they can work that part or we don't have to be involved.
Correct, and Chris was really like their sand last year and said it was really easy to work with him. Lou Brogge is the owner of L and M, like working with Chris last year, very willing to work together. So, it I, right now, it's my recommendation that that's the way to go, I don't, I I don't. We may get somebody coming in at seventeen or sixteen or, actually Jeff had some. Right here. I had, Gares hasn't, I called them on Friday and they haven't called me back yet, but Jeff had them this spring. When it wasn't that busy at seventeen dollars a yard. So.
So. If that's our discussion, we need to make a decision, um. I'd make a motion that we. Purchase our salt sand from L and M, coordinate it with Chris and. Do the contracted price of twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars for Chris to mix it.
A second there.
Let's vote, three. Three votes.
Over, uh, but is there a separate line item for salt in that budget?
I believe so, salt and sand combined, I think.
It was, it's combined, cause I thought it was thirty for sand.
Yeah, salt and sand, it's sand, I've got thirty-seven hundred, salt twenty.
And we're talking about spending twenty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand, sorry.
Okay. So. I guess if we have seventeen hundred delivered and. Chris thinks we're coming up short at the end of it, what do we think then, revisit this? Or just go with seventeen hundred, I mean. It's hard, it's hard to know what we used last year.
So, what what were we, we don't have none, we may have one. What we're spending right now with this vote is twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars in sand.
Correct, okay.
And what do we have budget for?
Thirty-seven.
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 I thought we only had thirty, but it's, so that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and twenty for salt, so.
And Chris was confident that, you felt he was confident that what we have in seventeen hundred will get us out the other end?
That's what he thought, yeah, yeah.
He's the one that does it every year, I mean, his opinion being more than mine.
Yep. Yep. So. Now, where do, where does his, I mean, pay him, does that come out of that sand?
It would come out of one of them.
Okay, no, that's good though.
We're getting room in the sand today.
Yeah, if we can, yeah, that line item, we can, which one to one.
Yeah.
So you're gonna make the phone calls, Josh, to L and M and to Chris, getting each other's contact information and get the ball rolling.
And then, I guess the only thing I need the number on is uh, so New England, it's New England Salt, right?
Yeah, I can text it to you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
And that'll have to be coordinated into.
Right, that's the hard part, you know, I think L and M wants to get rid on the whip and I don't know if. Chris sounded like he could if he had to, you know, and and about getting the salt here.
Hay season.
Yeah, well.
I've got a contractor too.
You'll have to wait.
I would be happy to wait.
Okay, moving on to item F. Um, this is just discussion on the boards on the dam being replaced down on Route twenty-three down by the ball field.
Did we jump through?
Oh, yeah. Wonder if I'll.
Oh, we missed it, we missed it, let's go back.
Oh, that, sorry, that I do not have ready for you, I put it on the, put it on the list. And did not get it re-typed, so that I will do on the next meeting. And we'll need to have Chris either stop in to sign or I have him come to the meeting and you guys sign it.
Hmm. Is there a contract required for him to mix the sand for that contracted price of twenty-five fifty, we may want to just include that in his plow contract?
I I told him there wouldn't be a contract, that we were gonna try to do most everything.
Contracted.
So that.
So can we just write his winter plowing contract for that amount and just a second contract for the twenty-five fifty for mixing?
So.
And have him sign them both at the same time?
Make sure the covering is in there for one week after. The final.
I think, I think he said the plastic was there already.
Oh, well, he did, I actually was gonna get a town brush fee, but Jeff's list says.
Paris Farms.
Says to call Paris Farms. That's why I I was gonna get, try to get up to the town.
For the plastic, you mean?
For the blast.
Yeah, Chris told me it was there.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Let's investigate that.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna throw that one at you, Josh.
That you guys do that budget thing and I'll do that, we'll call it even.
Okay, so back to item F, discussion on the board being replaced on the dam down by the ball field.
I haven't been down to look at it.
So has somebody complained about it or is it?
Nope, it's just on my radar, that um, this is something that Jeff said needed to be done, um, with some boards being worn. It's the second summer, that nothing's been done to it yet, so.
Now, is there a time of year that that has to be done when the water levels are low or something?
Do they have to bore the water into that?
That's what I understood.
Hmm.
Well, if it's the bottom boards, you're gonna lower it to the.
You just took the concrete out of the dam.
Who does that?
I don't know.
I guess we're not able to make a decision on that tonight.
Nope, and have any of you gone down to look at it and know what we're talking about?
That's, and that's why I was asking, who brought, who brought this to your attention?
This was brought to my attention just before Jeff left.
By him?
By him. And I believe. It had been brought up in a prior meeting. I'm just not sure which which date that prior meeting was. And I discovered that the PDFs on the website aren't pulling up the notes, so. I've gotta see if Sam can get those to work. So that's just one of my radar things that I need to just make sure that.
So we're gonna call this no action taken, um, homework needed, so to speak. Need to do some further research. And I heard that Blaine New is somebody to talk to that's been involved with it before, is that correct?
I hadn't heard that.
Yeah, I heard that.
I heard that too.
Cut the boards, that's what I heard, he saw it.
Right. Okay, so we'll start digging on that, see what we can come up with. Okay, item G is interviews for town manager, our our advertisement, our public advertisement comes out this weekend's paper.
Right. With a deadline for all applications, um, August sixteenth.
We haven't seen any more since you put it.
No.
So we're getting just what we have on our, on our email, email and that's it, right?
Right, nothing new.
Okay.
Budget figures with work and on that, that will probably take place at next week's work session. I do have some information for you to pass out, but that's, I'll do that at the end of the meeting.
Item H is discuss budget figures. More than what we've already discussed.
I'll get it all pulled together for you.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we'll do that in the work session next Wednesday.
Okay. It sounds like a better place for it anyways.
Yeah, especially if we're gonna talk projects and so forth.
Right, we just won't be able to make decisions on it until the following slide board meeting.
Right.
Okay, item I, main DOT local road assistance.
So I was poking around in Jeff's computer email because I'm looking for the, just, you know, some information from the government land. Well, I stumbled across the application or the signature, docu-sign for our L R A P. So it had a deadline, so this is what it is, we're gonna get about thirty-nine thousand something. Um, and I submitted it. Last year in that town meeting, Diana Valley brought up the fact that that figure wasn't showing anywhere in any of our books. And I didn't see it anywhere, so I took it upon myself and just signed the document and submitted it to the state of Maine.
Mm-hmm.
So. We should be getting that money at some point.
So was, is that the theme of money?
No.
No.
No, this is local road money, so this would be money like Doughty Hill is state road. But we're responsible for taking care and maintaining it, part of that money is for that.
Is this open every year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last year, the figure was thirty-four thousand was involved, this one is more.
Yeah.
And I never did find it in the books last year for twenty-twenty-three.
Which is gonna bring us to the next category. Okay, so you've taken care of this, you applied for it.
Yep.
Good job.
Well, just a lucky catch, um, the audit, I have called down, I've talked to them. I've emailed Kevin, who's in charge of our audit, um, they are still waiting to finish the checkbook balances. And then they're gonna plug those figures into our audit.
Mm-hmm.
And we should get an audit at some point in time, but he couldn't give me a timeframe.
So we're still not gonna see it before this next town meeting?
Nope, we're not.
Wow. I find that frustrating.
Very, because we're coming up on budgets, we're, we're gonna need to start thinking, you know, projects for next summer. Plowing, plowing goods are gonna need to go out, we're gonna wanna start talking about budgets first of November at the latest.
Right, and we don't know where we're at.
And we don't know where we're at.
Okay, moving on, item K, discussion on old municipal buildings.
Yes, so I heard back from H G Callahan, they are not going to put a bid in to put the bid package together. So that leaves us only with one work, um. Out of the six people, six proposed companies that we sent pa- packages out to. He is gonna meet us next week at six o'clock at our work session, um, so that you guys can talk to him, meet him. If you have questions for him, um, sign the document if you agree to go with them.
Mm-hmm, and this work session is a public accessed meeting.
Right.
So this. We'll probably have public input with questions for him.
I would.
We need to, I don't know how, how to manage that, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Right, um, I think the public needs to know that they can sit and listen to anything. But it's really you.
It's an informational subject.
This engineer, bring, have him bring you up to speed on different aspects of the building. You know, their time really.
Right.
We need to be control that timeframe.
That's correct, that as far as going with that.
Yeah. I mean.
So in that work session, um, maybe we need to just open the work session with, um. You know, you're welcome to attend and hear what we hear.
Right.
Um, but it's not an interactive meeting with him.
Right, right, he needs to meet with you, any questions that you, as a new board, he hasn't met. Needs, you know, it's your time with the engineer, basically.
Okay. So that's scheduled for next Wednesday, at six, at the workshop, and that's here.
Here, yeah.
At the fire station. Okay.
He was gonna try to make it tonight, actually, but he said there's no, he could.
We've got too much on the agenda to have gotten through it.
Oh, absolutely.
Um. So next step of the old building is, is item B, um.
And I kinda wrote that there because I didn't know about Wentworth being able to come. So it will be after your next meeting, now what do we do? Sign the contract, let him get started, I guess, but that also brings us back to another question. All the stuff within the building, what is the engineer gonna do? He's gonna be opening the walls, is he? I've heard that a couple times.
From the inside.
I think we've got some wiring issues and we've got some, we don't, I don't think we need to tear the walls out or any of that, but we have the issue of. They're not gonna work, wanna work over our junk pile.
Right.
So our junk pile needs to be cleaned up where, you know, we got desks and old telephones and. Every other thing in there that was just left behind, and we can't expect somebody to come in and work in a cluttered environment. So.
And I mean, he's, I mean, he's gonna be putting big, like sending out bid packages and like contractors, finding out what, what's their price gonna be. So I don't know how that works.
Access to it.
That's the other, yeah, that's what I was.
Stand on an assurance of them having access to it, we need to answer those questions before he gets here. Where do we stand with him, I'm I'm assuming as an engineer, when he takes on a project, he's got insurance to cover all of that. But we need to, we need to confirm that with him.
So we probably need to have a copy of the insurance on file, I'm guessing. So when I call MMA or I'll email them, we need to know about access for the engineer to go in?
I think once we, once we. Sign a contract and employ them to do the job, I think we probably, they probably would be covered on us as well as them, but we need to know that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, next, Abbey Fowler lot and the sale of.
We have, um, Brian Howard sent us. The option to purchase the Abbey Fowler lot back. This is this email. I understand that he got it for a dollar. Uh, but there were stipulations and Bridie told me to look up the deed, which she actually looked it up and gave it to me. There are stipulations in this deed that really haven't been done yet, so I did not give you copies of this.
Okay.
Um, but you can have certainly, I think I will tell you tomorrow when we stop in or.
Okay. I think this is better table to a work session and if we had copies of everything ahead of time so that we could come prepared.
Yeah.
And see what Bridie showed you and see what Brian's email says. I don't wanna load that work session up so we're there till midnight, but.
Yeah, exactly, but.
At this point, I think we're looking at the town hall and we're looking at this Abbey Fowler thing.
Right.
I just do something else. Yeah, so I'd make a motion to table that until our work session.
So I was contacted, um, last week from a gentleman that came, he was a broadbeand gentleman. And he was passed out pay. So, I was contacted, um, last week from a gentleman that came, he was a broadband gentleman, and he was passing out pamphlets. So, one that led to another discussion came up about this building. He actually works with the Brownsfield program, which has done the mill project in Dover. Um, there's a bunch of other things, you have a huge packet in your, in your books, um. They want to actually look, he's taken it to their, his supervisors, and they want to look at the building as a project to be renovated. And it would cost nothing to the town. He's supposed to be coming up through sometime tomorrow, um, but he's not positive. And if he does, I'd like to get ahold of one of you, see if we can talk to him. He gave me a whole bunch of information, just quickly over the phone, um, but they do grants, um, it'd be all paid for. Um, they do renovation, taking out the lead, and whatever else needs to be removed, but they're interested in this old building.
And he's coming tomorrow?
He's supposed to be, no, I don't know if, he said he'd be riding along with, with his boss, so.
I'd like to be involved with that.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like to, now, I'm gonna be working at the shop tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends on what it is, but I could probably come down to him.
Okay.
If it's in the afternoon call, I'd love to be there, but tomorrow morning is, is four in the morning, so. If it's, if he's coming in the afternoon, I will make it work.
Okay.
If not.
Well, we'll go down.
I'll trust in you guys, you know.
All right, so we had a couple of topics that we didn't, that we didn't settle on, the the Brownsfield and the Abbey Fowler lot, and the next steps in the old building. I make a motion that we move those to our work session. Yep, and vote, three. So, we're gonna move those items to our work session. That way, we'll all be more educated about them, we'll have read it all and.
Exactly.
And you're gonna prepare copies of the Brian Howard proposal and the original deed agreement
Yeah.
between the town and him.
Yeah, I'll get that ready for you.
Good. Okay. Moving on to item number eight, we do not have a town manager, therefore, we do not have a town manager report. Item nine, road commissioner, we do not have a road commissioner report, other than what's been discussed and decided in this meeting. As us trying to fill those positions as a board.
So, I have, uh, Matt brought me, um, a bill or quote for, for, um, oil filters and oil to change the trucks. Um, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. I just need your blessing to be able to go ahead, tell him that he can do the oil changes on the trucks.
And that comes out of his budget and it's in the budget, and there's no issues there?
Nope.
Just needs approval to do it.
It just needs approval.
They do, they do the labor. What's that?
You or I could probably get this a lot cheaper.
I wonder what municipal pricing is.
I don't know. If you, the.
Would that place in that corner?
I'll say, here's the, um, the price of it. So, we have some signs that we need, um, Silvers Mills Road, there's a hidden driveway, her name is Jill Dean. And there's no way I can say that last name. Casmas, Casmas?
Casper's that, I think.
Thank you, um, she's the one that said the sign is gone, and, or she requested one because people speed down that road. And I, six ninety-one Silvers Mills, that, I don't know where that is.
Six ninety-one. I think that's down.
I haven't quite learned that one on the road.
Down by where the guy fixes bicycles. Just before you get to minutes, just before you go down through that dip before minutes.
Oh, okay.
Right on that corner, I think that's what they're talking about.
Yeah, she said that it, they fly down that road, so she wanted to have a, um, hidden driveway sign. Uh, we also have two roads, uh, Memory Lane and Naughty Pine Drive.
That we've named.
Yeah, that we've named, just permission to go ahead, call white sign and get those ordered. If it's okay with everybody, um, the only thing I don't know is if we have any of the poles for the signs in the garage.
I'll come get the key for you tomorrow and I'll check that.
Okay.
And the plastic.
As far as ordering the signs, we need to have a motion and a vote if we're gonna do it, right?
Right, and I got one other thing on that, it's last winter, there was a accident on Borough Road coming from Dover, there is no signage, but there's a corner right there where Norton Mills meets, and that dip.
With the bridge?
Yes, we really should have slow corner or at, at least a, a corner sign up there, at the, I mean.
So, you have a list of those signs, Michelle?
Yes. And you want me to go ahead and do the hidden driveway sign, or do you wanna go look that up first?
I know exactly what she's talking about, if it's not there, it shouldn't be.
Okay.
Coming right around the, um, the long dip before minutes.
You're talking about, just about Dan Hall's, come up the hill and then it kinda curves right there, and then it flattens out those.
I'm pretty sure, let's, let's just, let's just figure that out right now, it'll take me ten seconds, I'll tell you where it goes.
And the last thing I have for you guys is figures for, like, to give you an idea for your new town manager. I've kind of broke things down as far as what Sam and I, different rates for, um, like, going back and figuring our raises, um. Hopefully, I believe it's, it makes sense to.
We're gonna have to back up and cover a little bit of ground here.
Yeah, I didn't wanna forget to give you the last little piece.
Yes, what is that corner where I thought it was? So, if you go from Gilman Corner from minutes, headed back to town, you go down through that dip. When you make that turn right there, where the bicycle alley is, when you come towards minutes, you come up over Birmingham, around the corners and driveway right there. That's what she's talking about. Okay, so we've got a couple of decisions to make here before we adjourn. The Matt, the fire department Matt thing, um, the only thing I would say is, is, uh, he may wanna just call it around, see if he can buy it a little less. I know what this stuff costs and Josh does, and, but maybe, he may pull some little money, that's all.
Okay.
I make a motion, we vote to approve the oil change stuff for the fire trucks for Matt. And leave it in his hands to shop to the best part.
Okay.
A second, to vote, that's done. Three for servicing the fire truck. Okay. The signage we talked about. So, there's what, four signs that we need?
Yeah, uh, hidden drive, corner, and two road names.
Okay. And with the nine-one-one thing, the road names are necessary.
Yeah.
We have to do them. I make a motion, we have Michelle order those signs from white signs. Vote, three. I think that covers everything, doesn't it, Michelle?
I think it does.
Everything on your list?
I think it does, um, I did have Denise Fazelli come in, she's part of the, um, Chamber Commerce. She sent me a link that we can use off their website so that anything that's going on with us will also come through on the Chambers website.
Is there a cost to that?
No, it's part of our membership.
Really?
Yeah, so, um, I have all that, I just haven't done it with her, yeah.
Okay, do we need a vote on that to do it, or?
Nope, it's just part of our, yeah, she just did a, like a, just dropped by and dropped some books off.
Yeah, so we're just being notified.
Yeah.
So, have we covered everything that we didn't move to the next meeting?
I think so.
Well, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Vote, we are adjourned.